As the Mayor of the Town of Clayton, I'd like to call this regular Town Council meeting to order. I ask you to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Most gracious and heavenly Father, we pause to give you thanks for the many blessings of this day, and we ask, Lord, now that you be with us as we proceed with the business for the Town of Clayton, for it's in Jesus' name I pray. Amen. Do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
No adjustments this evening.
All right, no adjustments to the agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agendas as presented.
So moved.
Got a motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Up next is your consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the adoption of the consent agenda as presented. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Up next, under Administrative Items, is the Clayton For You.
Good evening, Council. I'm Emily Stahl, Communication Specialist with the Town of Clayton. With Memorial Day coming up this weekend, it's the unofficial start of summer, so we wanted to see what the Town of Clayton will be doing this summer and the number of opportunities that will be available. The best part, they are all free.
During this breaking news edition of Clayton For You, summer is here, and the Town of Clayton is packed with free, family-friendly activities. Whether you're looking to cool off, get outside, or explore local art, there's something for everyone this season. You had me at free. Let's kick things off with a favorite, the Splash Pad at Municipal Park. It's open daily from 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., so you can splash, laugh, and beat the heat all day long. And if your kids love climbing, swinging, and sliding, check out the new playground at Clayton Community Park. Bill with support from the 2019 Parks and Rec Bonds, it's got something for every age. Meanwhile, Harmony Playground at East Clayton Community Park is all about inclusive play for kids of all abilities. And hey, don't leave your pup at home. Head to the East Clayton Dog Park and make it a family day. Speaking of family time, ready to slow things down a bit? Take a walk or bike ride on the Clayton Riverwalk on the Nooks. It's a four-mile scenic trail that's perfect for getting outside. Or add a little storytime to your steps with the Story Walk at East Clayton Community Park. It's a children's book spread out page by page along the trail. It's a great way to read and explore together. Now let's talk tunes. The Downtown Concert Series at Town Square kicked off on May 9th with sounds of Snapback. Enjoy free live music all summer long with Five Twelve, the Selena Experience on June 26th, Second Helping, the Leonard Skinner Tribute on July 17th, the Clayton Locals Night on August 14th, and Sleepin' Booty on September 5th. Concerts start at 6:30 p.m. with pre-show fun kicking off at 6:00. Bring your launcher and dance the night away. Next up, art lovers, this one's for you. This year's Clayton Sculpture Trail just launched with 13 brand-new sculptures around town. It's like an outdoor museum you can enjoy anytime for free. Okay, let's talk about the big summer events. There's four of them, so get your calendar ready. Slide into Summer. Party in the Square is Thursday, May 22nd at Town Square with free water slides, inflatables, and more. The Juneteenth Celebration is Saturday, June 14th at the Clayton Center, followed by a community reception. The Town's annual Independence Day Celebration is Friday, July 4th with a full Main Street Festival and a fireworks show that's sure to light up the sky. And Popcicles in the Park is Thursday, July 24th at Municipal Park with free, refreshing treats and activities to celebrate the end of National Parks and Recreation Month. Now that's how you celebrate summer. Water slides, music, fireworks, popcicles. I mean, do we ever take a break? Not when there's this much fun happening in town. So there you have it. Fun, free, and happening all around town. You bring the sunscreen, and we'll bring the updates. Thanks for watching Clayton For You. We'll see you next time.
That's awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, up next on the agenda are the introduction and special presentation, and our first presentation is the Elected Officials' Day Proclamation, and I'd like to give the floor to Deputy Town Clerk Sam Johnson Phillips.
Thank you, sir. Town of Clayton Elected Officials' Day Proclamation. Whereas local elected officials serves as the closest link between government and the people, making decisions that directly impact the quality of life in our communities, and whereas these public servants accept the responsibility of leadership with integrity, transparency, and a commitment to public service, often making difficult choices in the best interests of their constituents; and whereas recognizing our elected leaders encourages civic engagement and fosters a deeper understanding of and respect for the democratic process; and whereas our elected officials work to enhance the quality of life in the Town of Clayton by listening to and valuing the needs of all citizens; and whereas it is on this day we recognize our elected officials of the Town of Clayton, Mayor Jody McLeod, Mayor Pro Tim Michael Sims, Councilmember Ruth Anderson, Councilmember Andrea Archer, Councilmember Porter Casey, and Councilmember Gretchen Williams. Now therefore, the Town of Clayton hereby proclaims May 19th, 2025, as Elected Officials' Day in the Town of Clayton, and encourages all residents to join in expressing gratitude to those who serve in elected office for their commitment to public service, community improvement, and leadership, proclaiming this 19th day, May 2025. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Up next will be the National Public Works Week proclamation. Town of Clayton National Public Works Week, May 18th through the 24th, 2025 proclamation. Whereas public work professionals are part of the multifaceted department and play an essential role in our everyday lives, though we may not know it; and whereas in Clayton, dedicated public works teams tirelessly maintain and improve our streets, manage fleet services, oversee facility maintenance, and care for public grounds, all of which are crucial in our town's daily operation and future growth; and whereas the hard work of these professionals is vitally important in preserving town-owned assets and grounds which house structures and services that enhance the health, well-being, and enjoyment of the public; and whereas it is crucial for the town's residents, visitors, employees, and leaders to understand and appreciate the vital role of public works, whether they be frontline workers, specialists, or clerical staff; and whereas their dedication and continued efforts foster community pride, support our everyday routines and activities, and strengthen the overall performance and vitality of the town through integral programs; and whereas this year, 2025, we celebrate the 65th Annual National Public Works Week, an opportunity endorsed by the American Public Works Association to acknowledge and honor the work and dedication of public works professionals across the nation and right here at home. Now therefore, on behalf of the Clayton Town Council, we do hereby proclaim May 18th through May 24th, 2025, as National Public Works Week, and urge all our citizens to join in in recognizing and celebrating the many contributions of our public works professionals. Let us participate in community activities, events, and ceremonies that highlight the commitment to enhancing our health, safety, and quality life, proclaimed by Clayton Town Council this 19th day of May 2025. And we can never say thank you enough for all the good work every person in public works does for the Town of Clayton. So I'd like to have a nice round of applause for these folks, and I'd like to invite you up, and let's get a picture right down front really quick, if you don't mind. Thank you.
All right, everybody. Ready? Three, two, one. One more. Three, two, one. Thank you.
And next up will be the Historic Preservation Month proclamation. Councilmember Casey to present to the Clayton Historical Association.
Thank you. Proclamation observing National Preservation Month, harnessing the power of place, May 2025. Whereas National Preservation Month was established in 1973 by the National Trust for Storage Preservation, and whereas the Town of Clayton has had a national register historic district since June 2010, and whereas the Town of Clayton has approximately 273 contributing properties in its historic district, and whereas historic preservation is an effective tool for managing growth, revitalizing neighborhoods, fostering local pride, and maintaining community character while enhancing livability, and whereas historic preservation is relevant for communities across the nation, both urban and rural, and for Americans of all ages, all walks of life, and all ethnic backgrounds, and whereas it's important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that has shaped us as people, and whereas Preservation Month, May 2025, we are celebrating the power of place, the countless ways, big and small, that preservation creates. Now therefore, on behalf of the Clayton Town Council, we hereby proclaim and observe May 2025 as National Preservation Month, and encourage the local citizenry to participate in activities that foster awareness and appreciation of historic structures and historic contributions to shaping the history of Clayton, Johnston County, North Carolina, and America, proclaimed by the Clayton Town Council this 19th day of May 2025. Signed, Jody McLeod. And at this point in time, I'd like to ask the Clayton Historical Association to come up. Bruce Nagel and the President, who is instrumental in helping us get this registered several years ago, and then Mr. McEel too. Thank you. Give them a round of applause, please.
Thank you, sir. Up next will be our public hearing. It's the Fiscal Year 25-26 Budget First Public Hearing, and I will give the floor to Town Manager Rich Capola.
Thank you, Mayor. Before we get to the presentation here, while Budget Manager Todd Mellon is bringing it up, I'd first like to just thank everybody that's participated in getting us to this point. Over the past several months, our staff have been really working diligently reviewing the Fiscal Year 25 current budget to see what kind of things or opportunities there were to be able to get finished up this year, as well as having to look forward at FY '26 so we could craft this budget to present to you all here formally tonight. The budget process is one of the most important responsibilities we have here in local government, and certainly from my position. There's a lot of considerations that need to go in every year, particularly having to operate three different major funds totaling over $100 million. There's a lot that go into that, and we do not take it lightly. So this year, we've had a little bit of a shot in the arm, if you will, with regards to being able to get the budget done. Last year, you all graciously allowed us to create the Budget Manager position, which Todd has come to us and filled here. So over the past year, he's been really getting up to speed with, you know, the needs of the Town of Clayton, how we do business, providing some opportunities for us to improve the process, what that is, the budget development process. And so with that, I want to thank him personally for all the hard work that I know he's put into it, and give him an opportunity here to go ahead and present really the fruits of his labor and have some good general discussion about it. So with that, Todd, you want to take it up?
Thank you, Rich. Mayor, Members of Council, good evening. Yeah, as Rich said, I came here, I don't know, as early into January last year, so this would be sort of the culmination of the first entire budget process that I've had the pleasure of being a part of. We changed a few things up, I think made some improvements here and there, and we'll talk about those a little bit, and just jump right in here. So some of the highlights, first of all, we changed our budgeting process a little bit for Fiscal Year '26 by going to a base budgeting strategy. Base budgeting strategy, I've spoken with you folks about it before, the public at large, is it's a process where we identified past history. I went through every line item, looked at past history, past three years, did some averaging sort of analysis on what we had been spending in those line items, compared that to the current year fiscal '25 budget, and sort of adjusted Fiscal Year '26 based on how those two compare. So in other words, if the three-year average was pretty close to what we had budgeted this year, we made that or something really close to the base. The three-year average was much lower than the current year budget, we adjusted it down closer to the three-year average. So it's sort of a conservative way to start from the beginning to facilitate some conversations between myself and a lot of the department managers on how to really only budget what we need. And so I thought it was, we had some really good conversations. Some of these, some of these line items were, a lot of line items were adjusted down after the conversation, and so it was a really good conversation. So we'll get into more of that a little bit more as I go through the slides here. Also, we use, we shifted to a different software, budgeting software called ClearGov. It's been pretty good so far. We've been able to do the entire budget in that software, and it afforded us the ability to have some more accurate budget development processes. So in other words, so example would be, we were able to budget by position this year as opposed to just dollar amounts, right? So we know what every position costs and things like that. So we were able to get a little more accurate in a lot of ways with that software. Moving forward, we're shifting, if you see that bullet point there, we've shifted to maintaining our strategic plan within ClearGov as well. It's going to give us a good opportunity to sort of link our strategic plan that you all and we all have worked extensively on the past 18 months at least, to link that directly to the budget. So we'll be able to tell our folks, tell our citizens, this is what we're spending on each of these strategic plans. So in the future, at some point, we'll have, hopefully, it'll be this fiscal year at some point, we'll have tools on a website, on a public website where folks can go and say, okay, there's one strategic plan initiative, what a vibrant downtown, that's one of our focus areas, right? How are we spending our budget on achieving the goals within that focus area? So anyway, more to come on that. So a few more highlights, a general fund is balanced at this point at $67.2 million. The town is recommending a .49 per $100 valuation tax rate. That is, okay, yeah, and that will generate, with that adjustment, it generates almost $1 million less in revenue for personal property compared to existing tax rate because personal property is not revalued, and so this lower tax rate applied to our personal property across the town results in a lower revenue in that area. But capital outlay is about $7.9 million, and the general fund this year includes $7.5 million for a land banking opportunity for economic development purposes. We have also leveraged debt financing where we feel it's appropriate for big projects, big purchases, and fund balance appropriation to a certain extent as well. And the water sewer fund is balanced at $48.3 million. This includes a recommended 10.2% combined rate, water and sewer. It's about 6% water, 12.5% sewer, I believe is how it breaks down. So 10.2% is less than we thought it would be at this time last year, although it is, it is still an increase, we recognize that. Capital outlays $2.2 million in water sewer fund. Electric fund is balanced at $25.7. This includes a recommended 2% rate increase for Fiscal Year '26, which is about what we had projected last year. Our capital outlay in the electric fund is $6.2 million. Across the town, we're recommending seven new positions, that's four in the, four in the general fund, three in the enterprise funds, for a total of just over $700,000. Okay, that was a lot. One slide. So some economic considerations as we, as we march through the budget development, there's a lot of uncertainty out there. So we tried to, we factored that in where we feel it was appropriate. We also, you know, CPI and the personal consumption expenditures are both inch down in March and April, which is good, but there's still a lot of uncertainty around interest rates, tariffs, GDP growth was a negative number in Q1, a lot of things that sort of make, make you a little nervous about what you think's going to happen in the next at least 12 months, for sure. We... Yeah, okay. Next slide, was jumping ahead there. So, yeah, tariffs, we don't know obviously what's going to happen. We think one thing one day and something else happens the next. So a lot of uncertainty around that, that would affect, obviously, it could affect our entire operation, obviously. When you think of ordering equipment, ordering supplies, ordering, you know, transfer transformers for the electric fund, all that stuff is fact, you know, that will be affected, possibly. So... Now, just go through some assumptions that we made for the, for the budget. We recommended a five-cent investment at the current rate, at our current tax rate to fund the CIP. You'll see there's on the list, there's, on the, on the slide, there's a list of our top capital projects. This five, this ongoing five-cent commitment would allow us to invest in those, in those projects, and then some. So this is a really important thing that, that we've all discussed, Council and staff. Ad valorem, these are all assumptions again. Ad valorem property taxes will grow 14.6%. Currently, the, after revow, the value of one penny is almost $546,000. We did factor in a one-cent reduction because of the unknown impact of currently $484 million of our real property is under appeal through the revow process. So we don't know the effect that's going to have on us yet. So we budgeted a reduction in a penny to hopefully combat some of that. We're assuming that sales tax revenues will increase by 2.5% compared to the projection for Fiscal Year '25. Sales tax increases have slowed way down in the past five years, as I'm sure you've heard Robert say, a handful of times, so we want to be conservative there and, and not shoot ourselves in the foot as far as sales tax revenues go. Development revenue will decline due to economic uncertainty. We're seeing, we're hearing about, you know, fears of that already, and then we're assuming investment income will grow by $700,000 compared to the Fiscal Year '25 budget. Okay. So assumptions on personnel costs, personnel costs are a large driver in any municipal budgets, expense budgets, as you know. We're assuming, we built in a 5% salary adjustment pool, and also a 2% cost of living adjustment for all town employees. State Health Plan is undergoing some changes. They're expecting some pretty large shortfalls over the next two fiscal years, and so by, so as a result, employee paid premiums, the premium portions that the town pays, going to go up. We don't know by how much yet. We budgeted 10% increase in employer contributions. The shortfalls will also have an effect on our employees as well. We're losing, for sure, we know that we're losing the $60 wellness credit for tobacco cessation. Employee premiums are going to be based on salary, they're going to be a tiered cost for the employer. Problem is, we don't know what those are yet, and so we won't know exactly the effects of those until after our budget's adopted. So it'll be August of this year. Also proposing increases for deductible and out-of-pocket maxes. Retirement Fund also contribution increased by .74% for general employees and over, just over 1% for law enforcement officers. So those are all increases that we have baked into the budget, the personnel budget. So revenue-neutral tax rate calculation. As you know, we're required to report what the revenue-neutral tax rate is for us. Currently, it's, well, it's going to be about .45 per $100 valuation. We are not required to adopt the revenue-neutral tax rate, as I'm sure you've heard. And so we're proposing, if you notice, we have .45 revenue-neutral tax rate. Our proposal included a .49 per $100 valuation in the general fund budget. We also, part of the revenue-neutral tax rate Um, we also, part of the revenue neutral tax rate includes the 6.13 average growth rate for the town. So that means even at the revenue neutral tax rate, our property values have increased by that much. The town's aggregate assessed value increased by 55.4%. So if you as a taxpayer got your tax bill and your increase was higher than that, then your tax bill is going to go up regardless of what, um, our adopted tax rate is. And then, and then again, revenue neutral generates a million less revenue for personal property because personal property doesn't get that revalued, uh, doesn't get rebalmed. So the lower tax rate applied to our personal property comes in a lower revenue overall. So, and the average assessed value for a single-family home now in Clayton is 355,629. I think before revow, it was 220 something, right? Yeah. So that's a big increase. Uh, some final thoughts. Current year, the fiscal year 26 budget, um, you know, reflects what we think is an efficient use of budgeted funds. We know we've, we've really, we really went hard at it this year to try to trim, um, trim things down with the base budgeting process. Uh, there's, you know, the ongoing economic uncertainty sort of prevents us from, you know, it, it necessitates that we're really conservative in revenue numbers. Um, we're, we are focusing on the adopted strategic plan. It was adopted last fall. We're really starting to, um, develop our budget with, with that strategic plan in mind. We're trying to achieve the goals of the strategic plan with our budgeting. And, uh, again, you know, this year, I hopefully will be able to come back and show you, show you folks that, um, we're, you know, technically linking strategic plan to budget. Um, I think it's going to be pretty cool. We are prioritizing the completion of projects. We have some really big projects that are, um, either getting ready to start, getting ready to wrap up, or right in the middle of. Uh, we're really prioritizing getting those things built. Um, we also want to ensure some flexibility because of, uh, you know, economic unknowns. We've tried to, uh, do that in our budget. We have, uh, we have ways to shift gears without being, um, excessive. Um, and so, and, and again, here's a note that ma- major fund balance appropriations are not a financially prudent strategy, nor are they sustainable. Um, growth continues, you know, our town is growing faster than our revenues are growing by. That makes sense. So, um, we're kind of outpacing, you know, as the town grows, our services have to grow as, as you all know. So that's an issue that we got to keep our eye on. We're going to continue to perform the annual debt capacity analysis for the CIP. Um, our CIP is, there's some really, really cool stuff in there and, but it's, there's a lot in there as well, as you all know. Um, and finally, the executive team is advocating for the implementation of the org structure study recommendations. Um, the, the orgs, the org structure study has resulted in shifting, um, department budgets around to kind of right-size, to kind of make operations a little more efficiently in certain areas. Um, and our budget reflects that by department. Water and sewer, water sewer rate, water sewer fund will continue to necessitate increases. Um, the, we have, as soon as, you know, Sam's branch knew this water reclamation facility, we also have water supply issues that we have to keep our eye on in the future. So those are going to be some, um, capital investments that we need to make. The electric fund will, will continue to require rate increases, but much, uh, smaller. The, um, it was 2% this year. Uh, so... And we're having to acquire debt to, 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 um, expand and, and build new development in the electric fund. Um, the town continues to experience strong growth, as I mentioned before, which, um, you know, as the town grows, it affects all of us. It affects all of our operations. It affects public works. It affects the utilities. Uh, the more people we have, the more services we want to provide and, and that's, that's a good position to be in, but it's also, it also necessitates, um, bigger investment. So we're also trying to maximize grant funding wherever possible. We're going to adjust fees wherever necessary, uh, and those fees adjustments are based on, uh, costs, right? And not necessarily just trying to bring in more revenue. Is that... Okay. So here's a table for, um, this is Robert put this together. This is all three funds. You can see sort of a summary, an expense category list here. So the general fund is that second column there. You'll see it adds up to 67 million. Water sewer fund, 48 million. Electric fund, 25 million. What's that, about 140 million overall? These is, this is the list of the recommended positions. Uh, the green there is the general fund. We're recommending four added positions there. Water sewer with two and electric fund one. Fewer positions this year than last year. I don't know if you remember that. It's over 20 last year. Um, so here's a, a donut chart that shows the proportion of our total revenue that's brought in by different revenue sources. As you would expect, ad valorem taxes about 40%. That blue, uh, the royal blue sort of, uh, section there, uh, state shared revenues, that's our state, uh, sales tax, share of our sales tax. Um, and then you can go around and see that, you know, we have some intergovernmental, we have, that's, uh, clay tax is a big section, a big portion of that, clay tax, um, funding. Fund balance, 8%. And then you can see our permits and fees, sales and services. All those are sort of single-digit contributions to the overall picture. And this is on the other side, the expense side. Um, and this shows more of, um, this breaks it down by function as opposed to, uh, sort of expense category. You'll see, uh, public works and public safety are the top two by proportion. General government in there at 20%. So... This shows the old tax rate or the current tax rate, not the fiscal year 26 tax rate, but the current tax rate to current, to the current average value, single-family household. So the current average value is 221,000, uh, and at 65 cents, the total tax bill will The average single-family value, single-family home value with the revow will be, is up to 355,000 and with the revenue neutral tax rate, tax bill goes up to $1,600. And then this, the table below shows a monthly impact of about 13, 13.61 a month for property taxes. Okay? Next slide shows, this is the difference in several different home values across the top. The two rows show the revenue neutral rate and then our recommended 49 cent rate. So the difference in that 350,000, $355,000 home, total tax bill for the year between revenue neutral and our proposal is $142, which turns out to be about $11.85 a month. And you can see all the different values and the different homes and the effects on At this point, we'll open it up for questions, public discussion. Questions or comments for staff?
All right. I had a few, um, and just taking notes. Appreciate, Todd. Thank you for, uh, taking charge of this. I know this is your first year. Obviously it was a really good breakdown. Um, I'm, I'm happy to see that you're taking a three-year average and not just taking last year's number and adding a certain percentage to it. Um, I'm excited to see the website showing where our, uh, this budget is going and achieving our goals. I think that's something that we made sure we shared with the community as at home. Um, you mentioned it, um, obviously seven positions this year in a growing town like us is, is, uh, is, is definitely an interesting, um, uh, tackle, way less than, than last year. Um, so just, you know, we're taking the revenue neutral stance and adding four cents. I just want to make sure that's kind of what the, the intent is here.
Yep. That's the recommendation.
Um, I know obviously there's some uncertainty with some of the home values being disputed at this point in time, so that could change to a certain degree. Um, I think one of the things, you know, I know we're not actually voting on this tonight, but I mean, it is concerning that we're a town that's growing faster, you know, than our revenues we're bringing in. I know that's something that we're working on as a council to try to, to tackle that. Um, it's not easy, um, but it's definitely something we're working on. A lot of other municipalities like us are having this very same, same problem. Um, you know, you know, one of the things I had asked too is, I'd asked from like at least, at least one or two citizens is, you know, maybe some more detailed in some of the line items on the budget that was provided. You know, for instance, an example, you know, I guess, uh, training and development, you know, how did you kind of take that approach this year, you know, and, and details and stuff? And if you want to kind of maybe elaborate on that a little bit or?
Sure. I will say, I meant to say this earlier, but on, on positions, um, thank you for the question. Uh, we did request fewer positions this year, and I think a lot of that can be attested to the org structure study. Um, a lot of those changes, uh, reclassed some of our existing positions, especially some of our unfilled positions to a point, in a way that we were able to shift focus of a lot of that work to where we feel like we need to, we need a little more concentration. Um, one of the examples is we have, we're going to have an operations function now, right? So we've, we've, um, that's a really important body of work that we didn't have identified specifically in the budget before, and that will be identified, uh, from now on. So I think that, that org study enabled us to make some of those changes without asking for a body for every, for every new body of work that we were doing. Uh, to, to address your question, uh, specifically, uh, training, we budget professional development, which includes classes, seminars, conferences, things like that. Um, that along with every other line item was scrutinized and, and, and for every department and division, um, PD, professional development, uh, budgets from the prior three years were examined, were averaged. And then, uh, you know, to the extent that, well, I would compare, I compared every one of those, but I mean, I let Excel do it. I didn't do it myself, but every one of those to the current year's budget, fiscal year 25 budget. And, uh, if the difference was large, in other words, if, 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 if we would find that someone hasn't been spending their PD budget, uh, first of all, we're not saying they're trying to pad their budget or anything, but a lot of times what you're planning in January, you know, when it comes December and, uh, you're doing the work, a lot of times you don't have the time to do those sorts of things. So we've asked everyone to, we, we reduced whenever the average was lower than the current year budget, I reduced it to the average. And so they had the opportunity to say, no, no, we have a real need for that starting this year. So a good example, uh, Fire didn't do this, but Fire hired six new firefighters this year. You know, they were able to hire six new firefighters. Their professional development budget's going to go up and their three-year average is not going to show that it needs to go up, right? So we had to give those folks, not just Fire, but everyone that it applies to, the opportunity to say, this is what we need and make that request. And all those requests were, were filtered into the ClearGov software and, um, Rich and I and the executive team reviewed every single one of them. And, and, and we asked them to justify the reasons, we're not just professional development, for any base budget item that they were saying, no, it needs to be higher. We asked them to provide justifications in order to make that decision. And I will, you know, I'm just looking here, um, specifically professional development, um, from the fiscal year 25 adopted budget to the fiscal year 26 manager recommended budget, uh, professional development was reduced by 20%. So it worked in that instance, right? Um, and a lot of these, a lot of these operational expense sort of types of, um, expenses or categories, um, it was a really fruitful discussion, a really fruitful analysis to try to reduce that and then say, and then ask the department to say, to provide justification of why it needs to be higher. And they did a lot of times, and a lot of times it was great, you know? Sometimes, um, there was a real need for it and it just wasn't captured by the math that I was doing.
Thank you. That's an interesting, yeah, that's a good answer. I mean, I think it proves the fact that we're lucky to have you and you tackling this, these big challenges that we have. You know, I'm sure, you know, this is just the first, we're not voting on this tonight, but I'll probably have other questions. At that point in time, as I continue to, pretty sure. But thank you, thank you for your, thank you for answering, thank you for your time. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Good evening. Good evening. I don't have a question as much as I ask, and I guess this is both you and Rich. If I could, if we could at the next work session, if you guys could provide me from 2022, 2023 and 2024, um, I would just like to see our total personnel increase, uh, with the, the dot gov, the clear.gov, it should be a little bit more easier now. Um, then I'd like to see that increase by department. And I would also like to see the total salary and benefits in separate categories, if you could, from those, those years. Um, and the second thing I'd like to see for, uh, each year, those same years, the homes that were, um, constructed for each year total? Okay, yeah, you know, I'd like to see what we added on for ad valorem taxes for each one of those years, please. If we could have the next worship, work session, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. So, uh, thank you, sir.
Yes, thank you.
Uh, this has been noted as a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, please step forward and state your name for the record. Okay, no one wishing to speak. I will close the public hearing and I'll turn it over to, uh, the town manager.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, first and foremost, I just want to say, uh, I didn't mean to leave him out by any means, but especially last week while we were out of the country. Uh, I do want to thank Robert Mackay, our finance director, for all the hard work he's put in. A lot of these numbers that Todd and I have been kicking around here in this conversation here, um, it's, it's a result of the hard work of our finance staff and particularly Robert. Uh, Robert's been here, uh, through many of these, uh, budgets at this point, although, uh, for me personally, this is the first revaluation year that I've been involved with here at the town of Clayton. Uh, and so we've really been able to rely on Robert for a lot of his, uh, experience and understanding of how this works. So, uh, wanted to give him, uh, kudos for all the, all the hard work and his, uh, um, his recommendations on, on how to handle this because, uh, it, it is a bit of a, a challenge for us right now, uh, with the, where we're at as, as a town, with the growth that we're seeing, with the uncertainty in the economy, with the, the desire to continue to provide high-quality services to our community while, while struggling with, uh, some of those, uh, externalities that we really don't have any control over, but we've got to figure out how to, uh, still, still, uh, still, still provide. Um, there's been a lot of hard work and a lot of thought put into this. Uh, you know, this fiscal year budget reflects both the opportunities and the challenges of, of our growing community. Um, as, as Todd had mentioned, the demand increases on our services from everything from public safety to infrastructure, parks, utilities, uh, this budget, pretty much, uh, every aspect of it has been impacted in some way, shape or form by that. Uh, and it does include a recommendation of a tax rate that is above the revenue neutral calculation for this year as well as utility adjustments, um, to be able to maintain those high-quality services for, uh, not only all the folks here, but all the folks that are, uh, choosing to, to make Clayton their new home. Um, it's a result of a lot of careful planning and commitment to not only long-term sustainability, but figuring out ways to, uh, react to the rising costs and, uh, uh, try to, uh, end some of the limitations we're now seeing from the external support that, uh, we've been fortunate enough to be able to, uh, receive, uh, from both the state and federal level over the last several years. Um, those dollars just don't exist anymore right now. And so the ability to, uh, plug a hole with some help from our friends in downtown Raleigh or up in DC is, is, uh, no longer an option. Um, at this point, you know, we believe these investments that we're looking for are really necessary for us to be able to grow in a sustainable and equitable and forward, forward-looking manner. Uh, you all have been very, um, instrumental in putting us on the path that we are and particularly laying out some of these plans that we've been, been working on here the last four years that we're now hoping to be able to deliver on many of the great ideas that have, uh, come out of them. And so tonight, um, again, just want to thank, you know, all the staff and, and everybody that's been involved, uh, to this point. It's been a lot of work and, uh, not something that we take lightly, particularly when we're talking about increases, uh, but, uh, to be able to make sure that this community can continue to... to receive those services, that is where the recommendation stands today. So with that.
Thank you. I just want to make a quick comment for the citizenry of town of Clayton, and I want you to realize, and I hope you do, that the mayor and certainly this council definitely has a very keen sense of awareness on how important it is in today's economy to make sure that we are allowing the money to stay in a citizen's pocketbook as much as we possibly can. And our request with this budget, prior to getting to where we are, was we were looking for exactly what was going to be essential. We weren't looking for things that were desirable, but what's essential? Give us the lowest amount of increases on water sewer and electrical that can help us get by for a year. We understand the cost to live in Clayton, North Carolina, but we also know that it's important that we still maintain good business operation and provide those quality services that we're known for. And there is a balance in all of that, and we're going to continue to move forward and strive to make sure that that balance stays a part of the Clayton message. So in summary, this council realized how important it is that people are allowed to keep as much money in their own pocket without continuous payout, payout, payout. And we're aware of that. We've heard that messaging, and you know, this is a proposed budget. This council will still have an opportunity to dive a little deeper into these numbers, but at the end of the day, not to use Michael Sims' term, but at the end of the day, we're going to do what's best for Clayton and for our citizens. And, you know, we appreciate the support and we appreciate the feedback. All right. All right. So with that being said, we'll go jump down to old business, which is the Hookett Ellington Memorial Library renovation bid award.
Good evening, Mayor, members of town council and town manager. Christopher Glaunt, Engineering Department, Capital Program Manager. For you tonight is a bid recommendation for the Hookett Ellington Memorial Library renovation and a resolution to authorize a contract award. This project involves demolition renovation of the entire 9,200 square foot interior floor plan. This is, this fully renovated space will modernize the interior and create an improved layout to enable better services and programming to the residents of Clayton. The apparent low bidder for the project is Vortex Construction Company, with a base bid including any alternates totaling to $1,259,030. As additional context, we received a total of four competitive bids, with the apparent low bidder being reasonably well under the architect's estimate. This translates into an overall lower project budget, which is great news for the project and the community. Construction on this project is expected to begin in June 2025 with an anticipated completion of April 2026. This bid package was reviewed by the architect of record and the town's procurement contracts manager. Both have recommended a contract award to Vortex Construction Company as the lowest responsive response bidder. Staff respectfully requests that town council authorize the town manager or their designee to execute the construction contract and any associated change orders necessary to complete the project within the approved budget. I would also like to extend my personal gratitude to the mayor and town council for your support during the design process and providing important feedback to reach this exciting milestone. Another mention I'd like to make is thanking the library and public work staff for their efforts and diligence in preparing the existing library, along with its contents for relocation into a newly renovated temporary space. This coordinated effort has enabled our renovation work to maintain our originally communicated project start date. That's all I had for tonight. On behalf of to answer any questions the council may have.
Thanks, sir. Any questions or comments for staff? Yes, sir.
When I first came on, also, the advisory board I was assigned to, that you assigned me to was the the library. That was the number one thing that I got harped about. So I just want to make a comment that I'm really excited to see this take place in June. And it's, it's really needed, and again, I'm just excited about it.
Ms. Anderson.
Pushed the right button. I've lived here a long time, and I remember where the library was when I moved to Clayton, and it was in the basement of the old town hall. And to see where we've come, it was exciting to to have the library we have now, and then to see what this new renovation is going to be. It's been exciting to be part of this process, and and everybody's going to be excited when this is completed. It's going to be a, like a new library. It's going to be wonderful. Thank you for all the hard work.
Mr. Casey.
I think you have a couple of comments. Also have a question regarding it being under budget. Does that mean that maybe that money rolls back into the CIP or to help fund another project? How does that typically?
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely.
Okay, good. Glad to hear that. I want to echo the same comments as having a 10-year-old daughter who is an avid library fan and makes a point to go there at least once a week and check out 20 books. I'm happy to see this happen. I know that some people in the community are like, oh, why are we spending the money on that? You know, if you look at a town our size, even with this renovation, I think, I wish we could have done more. I'm happy to see this happen. I think it's well needed, it's well deserved. If you go there on a Saturday at 10 o'clock to probably about, you know, 12 o'clock in the day, it's packed, especially on the kids section, it's packed full. I mean, it's elbow to elbow. And I challenge people that are questioning it to go that during the end, well, I guess it's, it's being moved now, but go even when it's open and see how probably packed it's still going to be. So appreciate us making the commitment to do this, appreciate the support from the community, appreciate staff, glad to see it's well under budget. So thank you.
Well, since we're full of commentary, I would like to say that I'm excited about this project too, and for many reasons, like everybody else has already stated, but the number one reason for me is the fact that it is going to make the inside of that building more safe for everybody who steps in there. You know, back in the day when that facility was designed, nobody thought about sightlines and, you know, somebody coming in to do something dreadful and all of that. And, and, and the way this is going to get remodeled, it's going to bring it up into the 21st century, and it's going to make it a safer place for everybody. The library is a hub for our community. It always has been, and I'm pretty sure it's always going to be. So I'm excited that it's going to get a much-deserved facelift, but more importantly for me, it's going to be super safe for kids that are eight to 88. So I'm excited. Thank you. Anyone else? So I'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
For the adoption of resolution 2025. I only make so much, you make more than I do, Porter, so.
Okay, make a motion to adopt resolution 2025-40.
We have a motion and a second for the adoption of resolution 2025-40. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, like sign, motion carries. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Up next, under new business, is the approval to participate in the NC Waterborne Mutual Aid program. And I'll give the floor to Mr. James Blalock. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, staff, James Blalock, Assistant Water Resources Director for the town of Clayton. So I have the honor tonight to come and ask for y'all's approval to allow us to join the NC Waterborne Network. And just to show you how serious I am, I wore a coat today. So moving forward, that was my one attempt at humor. Let's make sure we get this right. So to go along with the theme that's been talked about, as you know, we have seven key focus areas for the strategic plan. Sustainable infrastructure investment is one of them, and part of that, one of the tactics is, or strategies, to develop opportunities to partner and collaborate and to develop additional mutual aid agreements. And that's what this is. So we're kind of on target for some of it, so there's a positive. And I'm not asking for money, so that's good too for everybody. That's a weak tag. Anyways, the what? What is it? NC Waterborne is a water and wastewater agency response network. It's, it was created in 2008. As of Monday, May 12th, it was 142 members statewide. It's a group of utilities that support each other during emergencies. It's voluntary mutual aid network across the state, and by I mean across the state is geographic and almost in every county in the state. Private and municipal groups are part of this network, and it opens up access to additional personnel, equipment, materials, and resources, you know, should the need arise. It can be used anytime, not just during disasters, but especially during declared disasters. NC Waterborne has a seat at the state EOC, and that was proven recently during Hurricane Helene. During Hurricane Helene, there was 44 requests for service, and they conducted over 70-plus missions. There was a couple of systems that, based on NC Waterborne being there, were able to get them back up and running within two weeks after total infrastructure loss. Now, that's amazing. Let's see. Since, and another side note with that is, since 2021, all water resources staff have been required to get their FEMA ICS 100, 200, 3, 700, 800, which introduces them to incident management. This also aligns with some of the training that we had. The one most recent was in January, which was hosted by Texas A&amp;M, I believe, Chief Rains. And that went over the structure of the EOC and all that. And we have a direction with the town with emergency management. Every department's been working on their response plan, their COOP, the continuity of operation procedures and incident command system principles. So there we go with that. It also brings back, you know, inter, interdepartmental consistency in emergencies. Public safety has multiple options for mutual aid. The electoral department has mutual aid from electric cities, and if we're allowed to join this, that will give us the equivalent support from resources that can help us. As many of you know, may not know, water and wastewater services is a specialized field, and to go along with that, you have specialized operators, because not everybody can operate a water or wastewater system. And in my 26-plus-year career, I've always worked, I've never worked around anybody that wouldn't help anybody else. That's what we do. We, we serve the community, we serve residents, customers, however you want to look at it. When storms come, we're the forgotten few, you know? We, we're out there away from our families. So this will give us added benefit to, you know, get the support that we need or help others. Benefits to the town, get access to additional emergency services. It formalizes, you know, the resource sharing, you know, creates that framework for requesting aid, for receiving the support, for tracking it. All that information that you'll need when a catastrophic event fails or event happens in this area or anywhere, so you can get reimbursed for it. It, it puts that out there. You know, it gives us the redundancy of critical services. It gets us access to specialized equipment that we need to do our jobs, and it also expedites the arrival of the aid and assistance. During Hurricane Helene, and I know many of you seen it on TV, how bad roads were washed, there was assistance within 48 hours of the request. And that says a lot, because you got to go out there, you got to access what you need, make the request, they got to find it. So that's, it's, it's a benefit to the town. You know, we have gentleman's agreements with municipalities and utilities around us, but if we have something happen here, most likely, they're going to get affected too. So this opens it up for us. Key takeaways, sustainable infrastructure investment. That's, that's strategic plan for the town, and this is a voluntary thing. We just sign a memorandum of agreement, we have access. It strengthens our emergency readiness. It aligns with our current emergency management structure. Like I said, it enhances collaboration and resource availability. So next steps, y'all approve a resolution, allow Rich or his designee to sign the MOA, which then can be integrated into our emergency management, town emergency management plan. And then it also opens up the door for staff to participate in future NC Waterborne training or drills. So with that, here's the slide everybody was waiting for, especially me. Questions?
Questions or comments for staff? They're letting you off the hook easy tonight.
I like it.
Outstanding work. Thank you so much.
All I need is you to vote on a resolution.
All I need is for them to make a motion.
I make a motion, we adopt resolution number 2025-31. Second.
We have a motion and a second for the adoption of resolution 2025-31. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. All right, now we'll jump down to staff reports, beginning with the town manager.
So you heard me allude to it earlier about being out of town last week. So wanted to give everybody a quick, a quick possibly update on where myself, the mayor, and Joe Stallings, our economic development director, were for a week, a little over a week with the travel delay, but.
It was about weeks worth of travel.
Yeah, I'm kidding. So last week, a few, a few of us had a fortunate opportunity to be invited by the Danish government, specifically the Danish Foreign Ministry, to attend what they were referring to as an industrial symbiosis study tour of Denmark. For those out there that aren't sure exactly what industrial symbiosis is, I did have to Google it to make sure I got the definition right here, although I can conceptualize it myself, but industrial symbiosis is a collaborative approach where traditionally separate industries work together to use each other's byproducts, energy, water, any materials in different ways that would help benefit other parties involved. The goal is to reduce waste, lower costs, improve environmental outcomes by creating a network of resource sharing between those relationships. Much like in nature, one group's waste essentially becomes the input to another industry's product, so there is no waste as you move down the chain. It is something that there is a big desire to see some of the industries that we have here in Clayton start to utilize as a first step in what would be a long-term goal to be able to implement industrial symbiosis here in North Carolina. The delegation we were with included folks like us from the town, the county commission, county commissioner, folks at the state level from the Department of Environmental Quality, as well as some professors from both Duke and NC State and state commerce, chambers of commerce. So it was a pretty diverse group, looking at this from a lot of different angles to really understand kind of how they were able to make this work over the last 40 or 50 years, and really look to see what kind of opportunities here in North Carolina they could bring, and specifically for us, how we could possibly use those here in North Car, or excuse me, here in the town of Clayton, under the current construct of our government and our, and our rules makeups. It was really enlightening to see how these different industries are able to kind of set aside, we'll say, some of the more competitive elements of how they would operate and be able to work together to really find ways to, to support each other in this, in this kind of an endeavor. Again, they've been at it since about the late 70s, I believe, is when the Cullenborg industrial symbiosis really began. So we're a little behind them with regards to this. However, the idea being you got to start somewhere, and here in Clayton, where we have an opportunity to potentially do that, we need to start looking at it. Did want to take a minute to thank the Danish Foreign Ministry and the Danish government for providing us a really well-thought, well-designed program. Some of the days it felt like going through a gauntlet. There could be some days that we, we visited anywhere from five to seven different industries or different industry groups to find out exactly how industrial symbiosis fits within their, within their world. But it was a lot of great information, and having the backdrop of staying in Copenhagen, Denmark for basically a week, wasn't a bad deal, considering they told us before we got there, it was going to be cold and rainy the whole time, and it actually ended up being warm and sunny for most of the week. Although being inside of factories and wastewater treatment plants, we didn't get to see the sun as much as we would have liked, but nonetheless, great trip, great opportunity. Really just wanted to acknowledge that, you know, it was an honor being a part of that kind of international exchange of information and really understanding more of how the Danish government operates and how they are able to support other things like this, and kind of let them know kind of how the American way of doing things would be, you know, able to support some of this in the future. Looking ahead, you know, it was really a testament of how industries and municipalities and communities can work together to really get smarter and more sustainable, you know, just with the way we do business. So looking forward to continuing that conversation with some of our new friends. It was a great bunch of folks. I know, you know, thinking about hanging out with a bunch of professors and scientists. I know, you know, thinking about hanging out with a bunch of professors and scientists and that kind of stuff probably doesn't sound like a real, you know, real fun time, but there was a lot of great conversations and we were able to have a great experience in the end. So again, just wanted to thank them, and we've got more to talk about, certainly more to debrief you all on later on about kind of the nuts and bolts of how it works. But it was a great opportunity and we appreciated every bit of it. So with that, that's my spiel on industrial symbiosis. Go ahead and look it up if you want more information. Or myself, or the mayor, or Joe are happy to give you as much.
I mean, you can look at me and tell I'm well-educated on symbiosis. Difference of government, same goals, quality of life for people. And the mayor of Cullumborg, I had the opportunity to meet him, he has 27 council members. Mm-hmm. Is he on the top of my prayer list right now? Yes, he is. He said, "How many do you have?" I said, "Five," and it's like herding cats. He said, "I have 27." It was a wonderful experience for the most part. They do not eat saturated fat. Missed my french fries, cheeseburgers, and steak, and all that good stuff. But it was a wonderful opportunity, and Denmark is a very green energy company, and I can see how that can be beneficial to the United States moving forward. So I'm appreciative for the opportunity. It was also wonderful for North Carolina biotech people to be there because there's a huge educational opportunity for young people in America to be able to take a two-year course on biopharmaceutical and go to work with some of these wonderful companies, making really good money and really great benefits. So I'm excited to see what the future holds for that. All right, town attorney? Town clerk?
No report.
At this time, I'd like to give the floor to deputy town manager Courtney Tanner.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Happy to see all of you this evening. I wanted to give y'all a quick update on some happenings with regards to some of the process updates that we've been working on to improve the development review process. The first thing is, starting July 1st, we will no longer, keeping the green theme, be accepting paper applications. We are working currently with communications on getting some information out there. We are also working with IT to set up a kiosk. So if somebody comes in with a paper application, they will scan that in, and so we will still be able to process it. And that process will be in place probably for a year as we slowly integrate. So we're not turning people away and telling them no. We'll have an interim process in place, most likely for a year, with a scanner and a kiosk. So that's quick update number one. Update number two on clarity, I have good news, bad news. Good news is, I'm going to finish the project sooner than anticipated. As you remember, I said I'd break it into probably four phases. First phase, I anticipated going live in July, another one in December, and then going through probably the end of 2026. Good news is, we are going to complete this project by the summer of 2026. Bad news is, we are not going July, live in July of this year. As we started testing, realized there were some additional tweaks, so it's actually going to be fall of this year that will be going live. We will continue to go live with the initial set of minus vesting application. We are going to go live with everything that I've already announced that we're going live with, so that's on track. It's just taking a little longer. As we were testing, I frankly wasn't happy with some stuff, and it was partially my fault. I'm going to own it. As I imagined things that we were building, as they were being executed and I saw them, I kept changing things up. So I'm going to own it. It's a Courtney issue, but I wanted it to be right when it went live for the public. The good news is, though, we will be live next summer with everything else. There's some efficiencies for us actually making some compaction to the timeline, and that's part of the reason we're doing it. But it does delay the site plan, final plats and things along those lines, but there's some significant efficiencies to doing it this way. So happy to answer any questions that you have.
Awesome. Any questions for staff? All right, thank you so much for that update.
You're welcome.
All right, I'll now open the floor for informal discussion and public comment. Anyone wishing to speak, please step forward and state your name for the record. Okay, no one wishing to speak, I'll turn it over to council for comments. Mr. Sims.
I am excited to announce that we're having the third annual Class St. Clair Basketball Tournament. We've had it before in conjunction with the Clayton Fire Department, Clayton Police Department, and Parks and Rec. We'll be holding it over at the municipality park, and it's going to have the local churches involved. This year, we'll have basketball games starting at 10:00 a.m. We'll have some guest speakers, as we always have in the past, DJs, free hot dogs. Come on out, have a good time, just a good community event. And I really appreciate the Clayton Police Department, our fire department, and also our Parks and Rec in helping me to put that together. And don't know, this year, we might even throw in a challenge between me and Chief Rains out there shooting three-pointers or whatever stuff. So more to come on that and stuff, so.
Can you give that date again?
May 31st.
Hmm. Hmm. Mr. Case?
I have my money on Councilman Sims on that one, sorry. Um, yeah, I just want to make a huge shout-out as we kind of wrapped up Earth Day festivities last month. We had quite a different few projects and activities that we had. I want to thank town staff tremendously for the trash trap unveiling. I want to thank Sound Rivers again for their hospitality and them helping make this come to fruition. We had a great crowd. We put a call-out to the community, and when we put a call-out to the community to volunteer and step up, they do. And so it was good to see some Boy Scouts, some Girl Scouts, and some other civic groups show up and be willing to help clean that, clean that trash trap. For people that maybe missed the presentation or don't know what a trash trap is, is basically, it is a litter collection device that goes in one of our streams. In this case, it was Little Creek behind Hudson's Hardware. And basically, it just captures as much trash that unfortunately gets in our streams before it floats into the other larger tributaries and ultimately into the ocean. So I'm happy to see Clayton have the first one in Johnson County, hopefully have more. And I just want to give, like, once again, give a huge shout-out to town staff. Matter of fact, one of the staff members came up to me, town staff member came up and said, "We're really glad to see Clayton taking forward efforts like this." And also, a huge shout-out to the council for helping, you know, obviously make this come to fruition. So thank you again.
Awesome. Anyone else? I would like to ask Ruth Anderson to let us know what's going on Saturday with Clayton Rotary Club and Flags for Heroes. Well, because I got the email today that said, "Don't forget, you're supposed to speak at this on Saturday."
I didn't get an email, so I don't know what's happening. Saturday, I think, is the dedication, isn't that the dedication for the, that's the launch of the, so you better be prepared, as I was not. And Mr. Sims, Councilman Sims, might be able to speak better on it.
Yeah, so they're going to have the initial launch for the Flags for Heroes. If you're not aware of it, this has been a huge event over the past, oh gosh, probably eight years now. It started off with literally 200 flags, that's by Johnston Memorial, Johnston Hospital here in Clayton. But now it's grown to over 1,500 flags. If you haven't seen it, it's a sight to behold. This year, too, which is pretty cool, they got the guest speaker coming in, and he's actually spoken here before. They requested him again. It's Colonel Berry. He was just featured last Sunday on CBS Sunday Show for the anniversary of the Fall of Saigon. If you don't know who he is, he was the one who flew the helicopter with the, signaled the end of the Vietnam War with the ambassador. But the crazy thing about the story is, is that he flew some crazy amount of hours, I think it was like 17, 18 hours straight before he had to pick him up. But he's going to be one of the guest speakers. I think they're going to have a flyover also, so he's usually packed, but a really good event.
Well, you caught me unaware, so now that I've had a chance to think about it, I can talk about it.
Yeah.
But to council--
And where can people contribute? That's the other thing.
Well, there's QR codes. You can go to the Rotary website or Clayton Morning Rotary website. Please do go out and see this. It's amazing how many flags we sell the weeks of this event while the flags are up, and how many amazing stories the people who are manning the table out there on a daily basis hear from veterans who come out and share their stories, sometimes for the first time. A lot of tears are shed, a lot of pride. I think they're going to have a hot air balloon out there this year, so you can ride it up. I think it'll be tethered, it'll be able to go off, but you can go up and down in it. But it is an awe-inspiring sight. People from miles away talk about this event and drive by just to see the flags. It really makes you proud to see all those flags up and waving, so please do come out and donate if you feel so inspired to put a flag out there for your hero.
Awesome. Thank you. All right. Anyone else? All right, hearing none, I will entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Motion to go in closed session.
We have a motion and a second to go into closed session. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries. We'll take a 10-minute break and ask everyone to clear the room. We'll take a 10 minute break and ask everyone to clear the room.
Good evening. You guys are all chatting. Good evening. We're into a couple land acquisition, real estate, whatever they are, and then Joe's got a couple things on the economic development front as well. Real quick, a couple land acquisition ones. Go away for a week, things go sideways. Barely the school system or the Johnson County College had a meeting today with Terry Coats with the land out there behind the hospital. We had provided a letter of intent to him prior to leaving for Denmark, basically saying, we'll talk about it when we get back. Somehow in a conversation today, it figures that the school system, Johnson County Community College, basically doubled down and said, we're just going to buy 25 acres from you directly and we're going to close by July. Palled around, spoke to Rick Hester, actually spoke to Butch Lauder as well, and I was like, has something changed in the week that we were gone? Because I think we would have liked to know, because the last conversation I had with the three of us on a phone call before we left was that they wanted the town to take the lead and get in the negotiation, get in the property under contract, do all that, and that they had asked for some additional due diligence, they wanted appraisal, they wanted environmental document, that kind of stuff, and so that's what we had been operating under. So Joe did have a conversation with Terry. Terry kind of said, nope, you know, they're just going to buy the land from me. All the usual, not the, oh, some of the usual suspects, Ed Aldridge, Barry Woodard, apparently they were all in this meeting today, kind of, whatever. A lot of hands in this that probably don't need to be in this at this point. So I did again reaffirm to both Rick and Butch that nobody has given the go ahead, that my understanding is that Butch called Burnley, was still at the school, and told them that the county's wagon was hitched at the town and that they expected us to handle negotiating this out moving forward. So that is the tact we were going to take. I believe we're supposed to receive the appraisal this week, Joe, isn't that the projected 22nd, plus or minus? So Kirkland's usually pretty close, usually gets a day or two before, a day or two after, so I would expect it this week. So coming out of that, we'll have a discussion, but.
Does that take it out of the plan?
Well, that's the message that Rick and myself are going to be delivering to all the players tomorrow to make sure that everybody understands where. So as always, you know, a lot of people trying to do great things for each other, but they're messing it up for us. So more to come on that. We may have to have Lee call his buddy Terry and get him back to the table to make sure this is exactly what we had told him in the first place, which was just look right here, you know, let us work this out together because everybody, this is just noise out here. It's real easy to spend other people's money. So that was the sentiment of the county commissioner and the county manager as well this morning. So more to come on that once we have better detail, but we did have a good conversation. Robert, myself, Todd, and Chris were on a call today with Davenport and Associates that we had with LGC about the land. They are in support, or I didn't hear a no from the LGC, they just said we want to see an appraisal. So good thing we had already ordered it. But effectively, we have a strategy where we could possibly do the land, finance the library, as well as the renovation in addition to Fire Station 1 that's necessary for the dorm work. Essentially, that would allow us to collateralize enough of the deal for them to let us take debt service in the plus or minus $11 million, 10, 11 million, depending on where all the numbers fall in. But that would be the recommendation that we are currently going down is purchasing the property, moving forward with the fire station renovation, moving forward with, well, the library is already moving forward, and then just put debt service to be able to handle that. So that land acquisition is doable from that perspective. We just got to get the deal inked with Terry and then we can move to the next step, which will be how does it actually look getting developed? So in case you hear anything from the Barrys or the Eds or whoever in the world, I would appreciate it if you would reiterate that they need to stay out of it, and we'll go from there. Second thing, shoot, what's the veterinarian? That guy. Yeah. So he's reached back out. His number is $970,000 for that property at the end of Main Street. I think he indicated to Joe that was just kind of his initial thought. So I'm not saying we might not be able to get that number down a little, and by a little, I mean it would still probably start with a nine, but you know, nine and a quarter or something like that, maybe we could put two. But ultimately, that would be a 3,500 square foot building that's stated and set up obviously for all the veterinary exam rooms and that kind of stuff. But large parking lot, you know, and enough room on the property that you could actually build probably a mirrored another 3,500 plus or minus square foot building if you wanted to. So he's like an answer as to whether we're interested or not. Joe, did I miss anything on that?
How much was the daycare thing?
The daycare current ask is 800,000. Admittedly, I have Satish, I asked Satish while we were away to have a conversation with Raj to see, I said, see if you can either get the number down to seven or something like that and we would buy it outright, or if he's going to be a hard line, 800,000 or 750, whatever number he might be at, what kind of financing options he would, you know, owner financing he would give us. Admittedly, I have not had a chance to talk to him today or since I got back.
It seemed like regarding the veterinary office, the mayor, you had kind of weighed in about that before, you know, two meetings ago, and then I think the five of us sort of informally discussed it a little bit last week, and there just didn't really seem to be much energy behind it unless there was a new data point or something that we weren't aware of, but didn't really seem to be a whole lot of momentum there.
I would check out the daycare too, just letting you know, so I walked that property.
Yeah, I did mention to Satish that a few of us would like to go visit the site again, and so I'll check with him tomorrow and see what the conversation was like.
That just seems to have so much more potential than the complications with the head project, with the parking and the thoroughfare and the location.
It can, I think, after walking, there's some things you'd have to do to it, but yeah, it does look to me have a lot of potential.
The daycare property, which seems to be, you're going to spend that money. I'm looking forward to going back in it. I went in it ages ago when it was built, but I'd like to see it again.
Okay, so we'll get the site visits there set up as soon as possible. We'll go ahead and let the vet know that we are not specifically interested, but maybe Joe can help, you know, pull people together to get something that maybe lifts the aesthetic down there a little bit.
Yeah, I agree. To me, that's a pretty high number. My question, and Sims, you may be able to speak to this, is like, they're asking 960, is that the market value? Will they really get 960? If they get 500, then that might be, that might be a different story from us on council to reconsider it, because I mean, we do have, you know, it's questionable, but there's that big parking lot, like literally, that seems like, you know, somebody owns it, they don't own it, that we could have it as an advantage. So I don't know if there's anything that we can do, like a first right of refusal or something like that, or if you let us know, we might be able to what, pay 5% more. Not that we're committing to it, we just have the option to have a discussion about it before somebody gets it for a steal and we don't, we don't, we don't know it yet.
Joe, what do you think about the valuation of that property? Is it pretty on point, or do you think it's over? He's asking more than it's really worth.
Yeah, it was mid eights was what the assessed.
Where'd he pull this account from?
No, that was the actual county's assessed value, so the nine.
Or he just pulled off the assessed value, he's not pulling it into the county.
Yeah, I don't think that he had an actual appraisal done.
And just speaking, we, developers reach out to us and stuff, I mean, and knowing some other properties in town, like sometimes the property owners assess the value of the house too, but in that situation, you know, does the house or the veterinary clinic building itself have any, I'm sure it has value, but from a developer's standpoint, they may want to raise it, and so, you know, it's, you know, he's evaluating it at 960, but a developer's going to say, I don't give a shit how much the house costs because I want to tear that house down, I'm more concerned about the cost of the property. So I don't know, I just wish, you know, it'd be nice if even it's just a general discussion, hey, if you get an offer, can you come to us and let us know just in case it's lower than, you know, your initial asking value? I mean, I don't know how you do that or formalize that, but.
Yeah, I mean, we can ask, no harm in asking him. Like you said, I'd like Joe to keep a good relationship with him and maybe try to help him find an end user as opposed to.
And Gretchen's got a question, another question. What was the amount that you quoted a few minutes ago? I couldn't hear you.
The act value on it is about 8.47, I believe.
But he's asking 970, Gretchen, if you heard that.
Yeah, when we were out there, he said, I know what it was assessed for, and I know that was basically numbers from a year plus ago when they started the rebuild, so he said it's got to have gone up from there. So how he went from eight change to nine change, I don't, you know, better part of a million, I don't know, but.
What do you think the land value is minus the property? Because to Porter's point, it may hold absolutely no value to somebody who wants to develop it.
Yeah, I've seen values all over the place, you know, a few hundred thousand dollars to hundreds of thousands of dollars per acre, but I think ideally, and this is just my opinion, if there's no purpose for the town, it's time, we would be better served in helping backfill that space with an active user that would help, you know, refill it and bring it back to use. I would be hard, to me, getting it for a steal would be, I just don't see us being able to do that. I think someone will, there'll be a new veterinarian, new doctor, a new whatever, come in and be able to use that space for more than half a million dollars.
And I understand, I appreciate that. The only reason I'm even having this discussion right now is about parking, you know, that's, but if it is that parking, I wouldn't even brainstorm out loud, I don't intend it at all. I don't like the property, I don't have anything good to say about it, so I'll stay quiet. I'm not in favor at all of anything to do with that.
Well, that's surprising. I mean, thanks, sir. Two other things, two other real estate ones while I got you. Chief Rains, if you call, we had the conversation about the property for the Veterans Parkway Fire Station. There was a single family home that abuts Short Johnson that would actually work out for us in terms of access and otherwise. I believe it's Greg's cousin or somebody like that owns it. The person that is in charge of their estate, executor, I guess, of their estate, has given us a, we will sell it to you, it's a little over an acre with a house on it, obviously we don't need the house, but we will sell it to you for $100,000 round number. They'd like to close later in the year, and so with your permission, we'll go ahead and get that under contract so that we can have basically a back door into that property off of St. Short Johnson Road. Need a visual?
No, I mean, why do we need a back door out of that property?
From an access perspective, for the trucks to be able to get in and out when Veterans Parkway becomes a reduced conflict intersection road, being able to get out the back, be able to get over to the light at Amelia will be helpful for these guys to be able to get out of the station, out and in to the station, to be able to have access out to Short Johnson will be beneficial.
We're not going to have access just to go straight to Veterans Parkway.
So we will, but again, you'll be able to go east, you'll be able to come back towards town, we're going to have to work with them for a mountable curb to be able to go over it in an emergency, to be able to head west towards the hospital, because that whole stretch of road is now going to basically have a median all down the middle of it, and you're going to have to do a bunch of U-turns to be able to go west or east, depending on where you want to go.
So like with the apartment two on 42, do we? On forty-two, do we not have stoplights right there where they stop and the truck pulls out and goes left or right, is that not the same thing we would have on Veterans Parkway?
So, we could possibly have lights, but again, it'll be a mountable curb, and it would only be able to use for emergencies, so otherwise you'd have to go. U-turns, um, to be able to get out of, or in and out, so the, the thought is the basic.
Would that be like, um, and I am trying to understand, but would that be like a, uh, uh, NC DOT requirement?
Yeah, it's the way they're gonna do that road.
Yeah, but it, it, it's the wave of the future, uh, so the reverse conflict intersections essentially take away the crossing over movement. Uh, which significantly lowers the impact or the crash potential at the intersection, so, uh, if you've been on Highway fifty-five in Holly Springs or, or pretty much any road DOT's built probably over the last ten years. Uh, they're all going to essentially a whole lot of U-turns, uh, but in our case, Amelia Church, I believe, is still slated to have a full, um. Full, uh. Full movement intersection, there we go. Amelia also?
That's right. He's right, they've changed that whole intersection.
That one is not gonna be even Amelia Church. That's problematic as well. So, is it, is it the Katie Johnson land?
That's okay, yeah.
I mean, I don't know, Jody, I mean, Jody's making me think, didn't we agree to buy more? Uh, buy that, more of that property than we had, I mean, then we have discussions like, oh, we're gonna buy eight acres, but.
No, we, we talked about buying, if this property came available, that we would buy this property, be able to get, uh, frontage out to Short Johnson Road. So what happens when you get to Short Johnson Road, are you gonna be able to turn left or right, is there gonna be a controlled stoplight there for emergency vehicles?
Yeah, we'll have to look at DOT plan for that.
I would think so.
They were not acceptable to the hospital for emergency vehicles, I can tell you that, in changing their plans, it was, it was many meetings with the AT and. When they came right down to it, redrew it, they didn't, they wouldn't do it, the ambulances are still gonna have to go. It's not gonna be good.
So, we'll, we'll, we'll continue those conversations there, uh.
I mean, I don't mind about the property, I'm not about that, I just don't, that's just, that's like, don't make sense to me.
Yeah, right now, our property ends short of that, that back, the Short Johnson Road, so, um, that was the intent, I don't have the map up obviously, but when we talked about it, when we bought the church land, that was the intent. Um, the other one that we just met about today, uh, just to put on your radar here, uh, the Mehan property on Guy Road, that's, uh. I believe it's fourteen acres, cause I believe the other two acres that he was mentioning have already been dedicated to, uh, to be right of way. Uh, not saying that we can't, uh, and actually, I think Courtney, at, at one point, may have had our attorney's office look into this, uh, the access strip from Veterans Parkway back to, um. Basically, the, the land that is parkland dedication that James looks given them are looking for us, that, that strip has been dedicated to, it already has right of way, so it's no longer part of the parcel, but. Uh, effectively, uh, fourteen to sixteen acres, we'll just leave it at that, um, and Mehan's, uh, Joan Mehan is, I think many of you guys are aware, and she's closing her practice in pretty short order here. Uh, and looking to liquidate, uh, we met today with her husband, who's really handling all of it, uh, really interesting guy, apparently, he was the president of Quiktiles before he retired. Um, uh, so, the asking price for the land is a hundred and ten thousand dollars an acre. Uh, in all honesty, that is. Pretty damn good price in the current world, um. So, yeah, so if you know where the office is on the corner, he did tell us today that the buil- building is sold, although he doesn't have paper on it yet, um, so I think we will. Probably reach out to him and just let us know if that deal falls through, let us, you know, talk to us about it at least. Uh, but essentially, uh, when you turn up Guy Road, all the land, there's just, there's a three acre tract that they did sell off to a dentist, uh, to be able to build a dental practice, but the. Just past that, um, is approximately, a whole lot of frontage along Guy Road there on the right, uh, there's about fourteen acres of, uh, developable land. Um, he was, didn't, I, I didn't get the impression he was currently working with a broker or anybody or really trying to actively marketing it, yeah, but, but ultimately, he's getting a lot of interest in it. Of course, they're offering him like sixty, seventy thousand dollars an acre, which. Right now, land like that, zone O and I, I believe he already has a zoning in place for that too, so, um. It is likely, uh, a desirable spot, but before it's no longer there, the question is, would the town have any interest in purchasing that property? Uh, either for site control in general or per town uses. Thank you, Joe.
So, can I have this, like, so he's already got an offer on the building? But I thought they knew we were interested in talking to them about that property.
Yeah, dude, the, Joe, what was his name, he seemed definitely like a savvy kinda guy, clearly been around the block, um, but. Knowing that this is something, I almost had fire sale, but they're, they're rooting pretty quick on this, this may be one of those scenarios where we could work a deal with. A certain portion of it being quote unquote donated, because I don't, I don't get the impression they're looking to roll this into additional real estate, I get the impression they're looking to cash out, so. There may be an opportunity there, uh, with that purchase price to be able to work a deal where, you know, kinda like we do, kinda like we do with Fred, you know, okay, you pick for this many acres and I'll donate the rest and. He still ends up, you know, they still end up in the same place with the tax man and we maybe save a buck. So, I think, um, so, just as a reminder too, just to the north. Here, that is that land that was dedicated as part of the Lions Gate subdivision, uh, it was dedicated with the intent to be, uh, parkland. Uh, I am not advocating in any way, and I think Joe would probably stab me if, if I said I was, uh, for this land to then become part of the park or added to that to be used as parkland, considering it is. Great real estate for O and I and non-residential, which we desperately need, um, you know, or at a minimum, get an option on the property, you know, I don't know, Joe, what your thoughts are on that, but, you know, at a minimum, lock it in at the hundred and ten thousand dollars and then. We can help either position it for a quick flip to somebody that. Is gonna build something we would like to see, uh, or, um, we had to purchase it, have site control and then decide, um.
Well, the, I think the other option we may have, and I think you wrote the name down, but that, that property in between, when she and I were talking, she said, I, I made a mistake. In breaking that acreage out of that whole parcel, I sold off a prime piece that should have been part of that, but what was interesting is, we know how much that dentist paid for it, he paid a hundred thousand dollars an acre, cause he told us. And that dentist is behind her office, and he's had it and was gonna build on it pretty quickly, and he has not, and he's owned it for how long?
A little over a year.
Yeah, so he's not made any movement to do anything, so, you know, that, that may be a possibility too, in my opinion, it's worth having a conversation about.
Yeah, but, but before he mentioned, um, that the building was already, or was already under a contract, I was in my head trying to figure a deal if we could get. Get, buy the proper, buy the, buy the building, put land swap it with the dentist, plus some cash, and then they get a building that they can move in right away, and then.
Oh, yeah.
We would end up with all that acreage, but if he's got that building quote sold, it makes that kind of a deal different, now Joe may be able to have a conversation with him and just say, hey, you know, again, if that deal falls through, maybe there's a. A three-way deal here that between us, them, and the, you know, the dental group, we all end up, uh, in great positions, cause they get their cash, dentist gets a building they can move right into as opposed to having to go through the permitting and destruction process. And we would end up at that point with seventeen to nineteen acres of prime non-residential real estate that Joe could really. Put out there as a, an opportunity for somebody. And there's always an op, you know, the, the land that was dedicated as parkland, um, I assume Jim, I'm putting Jim on the spot, he knows when I do that, but. It was dedicated as parkland, but if we were to find other acreage in a different part of town and land swap with ourselves, would that possibly remove the restriction on that land if we said we're gonna have. Additional acreage over here? So it was, as part of their, uh, uh, land development entitlements for the Lions Gate subdivision, that was their parking and fee and lieu, they didn't, instead of doing fee and lieu, they dedicated it as park. That was Fred. Okay, and it's Fred, so if there's some way or somehow that we had to work a deal where he actually had to approve of something or whatever, that might be doable, so. Again, if you all are interested or okay, uh, with Joe continuing the conversation with Joe, um. So, we're talking one point four million?
Million and a half.
It's what?
We're closer to one point eight.
It's a hundred thousand acre or?
A hundred and ten.
A hundred and ten, I mean, for me.
I, I would say even at one ten council, this is some of the cheapest real estate I've seen in town since I started.
I mean.
I mean.
I mean, I've, I mean, to me, that, that other parcel is kinda almost landlocked, I know there's this little strip that you can get to it, but it'll make. It flows well, so for me, I'm fine with it, you know.
Sure. Give you another idea, if you go to the interchange to the south, which is owned by the Akins, they're asking north of four or five hundred thousand an acre.
Where at?
So if you cruise down Veterans Parkway back towards the, um, interchange. Amelia Church, yes, sir.
Is that Robin Kennedy's?
Oh, Rich, go back up a little bit more. Right there, right there.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, Akins.
Of course he is.
Or contracted purchase?
Yeah, I mean, you, you guys tell us, I mean, we, we can do either, um. We, I'm gonna have to look at the money man over there, I mean, it's another better part of two million dollars that will have to factor into all this, although. That, uh, financing opportunity that we discussed a little bit earlier with the fifty acres, maybe we could fold this into it too, I don't know how they would look at that collateralization wise. He had it under contract.
A hundred percent, if we can, what I would like to do is be able to sign our purchase-sell agreement to a developer before we have to close.
Yeah.
So we could sell, we could sell our contract, make a little bit of coin, a little bit of. Make some money, sell the contract to a developer and get out of it before we actually have to close on the property, and then we don't need two million dollars.
Yeah.
So we've already had a few, you know, conversations with developers who are looking at doing what I hope will be a Costco anchored center, it's a little small, candidly, but. Maybe we get creative, Courtney's here, maybe she can help us get creative on the planning side, we'll shoehorn some of these things in, if we can get the dentist to the table. You know. The idea would be to go after, but perhaps we may not even have to close.
That'd be our goal.
If we can, if, if Jim, if we can assign that contract like that, I.
I agree.
That's other terms, right?
Need to jump on it.
Yeah. But it's cheap, I mean, comparative.
Okay. We'll have Joe follow up tomorrow and, uh.
At two point five million dollars, that's what he's asking for, that office is valued at a million and five, a little more than a million and five. If council would like to pursue it, you, you can't go to them.
No. So, just one question, Steve. How does this, Robert, how does this go? Yeah, and, and I'm gonna walk back my previous statement, cause after the conversation that we had today with the, the bond council attorneys and the, the bean counters from Davenport and all that, um. The complexity of if we did try to do it through debt service, you know, taxable versus non-taxable bonds and, and how we relinquish them and all that kinda stuff, I guess I would say, this is one that we wanna just play straight cash. That way, there's no strings, there's no nothing, you're basically only tied to however the land dispersion. The surplus rules of the, of the state, but if it's done through an economic development. Lens, there's opportunities there to get it in the people's hands that we wanted to get in, as opposed to having to do a.
So we could theoretically vote tonight to make an offer with the right contingencies in it, so we're protected.
Not only to vote.
Okay, that's even better.
So if you guys want us to go ahead and move forward, but start to go ahead and do an LOI, try to get this thing under contract, so there is a purchase and sale agreement to consider. Be good, be good, or start rolling on that.
It's gonna be gone within a couple weeks, you know, I think.
Yeah, so, so good clarification there, Joe, uh, so the land, certainly a hundred and ten, lock it in, the office building. If, if there's an opportunity to either squeeze our way in or, you know, give a backup offer or counter, you know, whatever you wanna call it, backup offer, um.
Yeah, all right. But I, I do see Joan's point, because I am a, I am a patient of Dr. Mehan, and I have no idea where I'm going for my general practitioner.
You need to call.
So if this new person coming in to buy that property is gonna be a general practitioner, it would be good for Clayton.
It would.
Because we don't have enough.
Well, she's so, and so he had, we had a lot of conversation with him about how he designed the building and she, where she designed it, so the, you know, the examining rooms were big, the waiting room was big, she put a lot of thought in. Her love for what this practice needed to look like in this building, so for her to have another practice go in there is gonna be a priority for her, I, no doubt, and the thought of even us spying it and scraping it would probably kill her. I mean, I'm being serious, I think it would be. I think this is gonna be her priority, and to your point, doctors' offices would be great.
Yeah, well, we'll make a run at that, and we'll certainly also talk, you know, with regards to the general practitioner, I mean, Joe can keep his ear to the ground, and, uh, we'll see if maybe we can't lure somebody else to either make investment or get into an existing space. Um, that is probably, uh, consistent with what Copper District with the medical office space and some of the other stuff they're looking to try to do, so, uh, maybe we get lucky and, uh, the need is fulfilled somewhere else. Last thing on the real estate one that I hadn't formally, I don't think, talked to all of you about in, in this format, um, Thad Avan reached back out to me. Um, I think, uh, Thad, Thad with the property, the parking lot properties downtown, uh, I think we'd already talked about, you know, he would sell the four lots behind HTR, which was James's lot, as well as the parking lot itself for two point two five million. Um, and then I brought up the old, another parking lot, um, and said, you know, we're still far apart, any movement there, you know, I said, council was probably at, you know. Five hundred thousand max is what they were willing to pay, you're at seven and a half, you know, seven fifty, you know, is there any, any movement, you know, meet, meet in the middle, you know, that kinda thing. So he did get back to me, um, him and Janay are willing to drop it to seven twenty-five. From seven fifty, so they knocked twenty-five grand off, um. He did reiterate that, that this is, if this doesn't work, then he's gonna have to go ahead and shut the, all the parking down in that area. So. All right, I just, I didn't wanna speak without asking, but I, in my head, pretty much knew what the answer was gonna be, so now, everybody.
We see that there is a major economic impact with that area downtown, we'll have to look at it and consider what kind of action we're gonna take with those, you know, stock issues.
I think, I think we need to have our polls really close on that day, but, I mean, have a house of cards downtown, you know. But we will keep, uh, keep you apprised of any movement there, and I think, I'm sure everyone of your phones will blow up the second, uh, the barricades go up, so we'll see what happens.
Yeah, and I, I mean, and somebody conditioning this to me, and they're like, you know, he's, you know, it's the town's fault that this is happening. And I'm like, that's bullshit, you know, that, that, you know, that, the, no, no, the town has taken advantage of this for years. That was a private lot that he allowed people to have that happen. The town didn't have any, the town didn't raise a big red flag and say, hey, go park here, he allowed that, he was, he was enabling it, basically. And for the message to be, well, the town reaped the benefit of this, was just, I don't like that narrative. And I think we need to, as a council, if there's questions, we need to make sure we have a narrative that echoes similar sentiments. Yeah.
Um, just as a math equation on that one, um, for the number of spaces to be constructed in a location like that, central to downtown, I was just curious, the comparison for if they're asking seven twenty-five, you know, what would it cost? How much more is that above what it would cost us to construct that downtown?
Yeah, so there were about thirty-five spaces, is that what, was it you I was talking to? I think originally I said forty, and you were like, no, there's about forty, and I think I went back and counted, and I think on an aerial, I didn't go out there and sit on the ground, but in the aerial, I think I got about thirty-five parking spaces potentially. Um, for a surface park lot right now, uh, somewhere in the ten to twelve, ten thousand to twelve thousand five hundred dollars is probably the constructed price, uh, you know, of, of a, of a spot. So you're looking at about four hundred thousand plus or minus, you know, between three fifty and four fifty, uh, to be able to build the parking lot.
But that doesn't include like a land purchase.
That's correct.
Purchasing the land where we, I mean, that's to me the only, I'm, I'm like everybody else, I think that all this narrative and then all this blustering is kind of ridiculous, but what I am interested in is more than math. Like, if we're talking about sustaining businesses downtown and parking, and we have this other looming threat of losing parking, and we don't really have anything ready to go for First Street parking, I was just, to me, if it boils down to math, and we can't, if, if the price is something that's comparable or cheaper than what we could do on our own, that would be the only thing that would sway my mind in one way or the other.
If, if he had come back at six fifty, I'd be telling you guys to take the number and be done with it. Because to your point, purchasing land in downtown, I mean, hell, we're trying to purchase land all the time, we just talked about a hundred and ten thousand acres is a cheap price right now in certain parts of town, downtown's certainly gonna be one of the more expensive per acre, um, prices. Um, yeah, if he had come down to six fifty, I'd probably be standing here to say, saying, guys, this, let's just take it and run, because we will never be able to build a thirty-plus parking lot, parking spot, uh, parking lot for less than that. Uh, this parking lot behind us, when we did it, uh, basically four years ago now, uh, five years ago now, hold it count, um, that one, this one behind us cost about six hundred thousand dollars. Now, it's a lot more parking spaces, but today's dollars, that, that would be a million-plus dollar parking lot all day long.
I think, I think Andrew has a good point. For me personally, I would rather, you know, obviously if the math doesn't work out, it doesn't sound like it does, but if we were gonna spend eight hundred or whatever the hell number he says, I'd rather allocate that money towards the First Street and maybe work some potential funding or whatever, outlap funding or whatever, to have way more spaces and have that as an alternative solution. So, you know, that would be my hope, that would be kind of what I'd be advocating for. If somebody comes to me and says, hey, why the heck are you not investing there? Because I'd say I'd rather take that money and invest in somewhere else where we can get more bang for our buck.
And the other thing I think about that parking lot is I think the leverage in this deal is on our side, because I think there's gonna be pressure on him, whether it be from downtown businesses or public or whatever. I think it could shift in our favor to go ahead and buy that, and he could come out looking like the good guy. Um, and I think time is, is on our side there, for pressure purposes.
I think we're good, I mean, I, I, I think, um, the other option we threw out was just making it a pay lot. And frankly, maybe somebody just needs to try to make it a pay lot go and see, or see if it can go. Um, makes it a pay lot, and it's still, and people are more than happy to pay the two dollars an hour or wherever the hell it is or whatever, then we're, we're out of the, there, there's a new business model in town, and we have no money in the, you know, no, no money out of pocket. Um, and if it allows downtown to continue to thrive, it may, uh, may change some other folks' ideas on, on how to utilize their properties or, or what they can do. Uh, if you think about it, we're kind of, I mean, we're prepaying pay lots with the different agreements we have with Compare Foods and some of these others. So, um, there's no reason that they couldn't put the same signs up and we, we get out of the paid parking business. But I'll let them know that seven twenty-five is not an option, uh, but I will, I will poke and prod a little bit and just say, hey, you know, we made you an offer at six something, you know, quick, quick close and a, a way for you to donate the additional so that you keep all six hundred thousand or whatever in your pocket. Um, maybe that's enough to move it, so. All right, Joe's got, I think, one or two quick economic development ones for you, and then, uh, we can get out of here, or you guys have. The signage, you're sorry, I, I think I misheard, the signage.
Order and get it where it says, public parking, right here, it's gone to that. I thought we, the way. Weren't they ordering some more signs?
I don't know what's that.
I, I was told that we had already started working on that.
Yeah, so, no, we, we were already starting to look at that. Um, I gotta follow up, I had sent an email about it, that was a couple of weeks ago now, but, uh, I'd asked them to look at the MUTCD to make sure that whatever size of the letters and all that kind of stuff that we were using actually were fitting for, for what we're using it for. So I have to follow up on it, but I'll work with, uh, planning and economic development and the folks, uh, uh, or, uh, downtown folks to, uh, make that happen.
People need to know what it's for. And I, I would hope, I mean, not talking about people that are Facebook warriors, but if it's true, we've already started pulling the trigger on this. I think that we also need to say, and I'd love to say, you know, Facebook warrior, you posted this, but we ordered those signs a month ago, before this post, so it's not. I know, I know, it just, it, it just, it just pisses me off. I know, I know, but it's just.
Okay. We'll put up the biggest sign right in front of his house that says, parking this direction. I'll do it on billboards, no, that's not how we operate.
Um, real, real quick, uh, mayor and council, uh, the Bio Realty Inc. folks who we had entered into a PSA for on that sixty-seven acres got back to me, uh, after some time since our last update, which I think back in March. Long story short, um, the PSA is up, uh, June the twenty-third of this year. They have requested a twelve-month extension and associated, um, pushback on all deadlines that were within the, uh, agreement. So things like the delivery of the first building and, and the like would all be pushed back a year. They have also proposed two different ways in which they can contribute to the, um, the pump station, infrastructure improvement, uh, associated with the project. One is that they will pay us a million dollars, we will front the cost and put in the infrastructure. The other one's a little bit more creative, uh, they will put no money in upfront, however, they will give us a profit-sharing agreement that will give us payment back over time of three million dollars in an undisclosed period of time, right? Essentially, we would get fifty percent off the net proceeds of the real estate after they take the first eight percent to cover their investment hurdle, and that would go on until we got our money back to top out at three million dollars.
Of something they can't sell and have not been able.
The market realities have not changed, right? So we're still looking at millions of square feet of this type of space being on the market around the triangle, not necessarily moving very quickly. However, they feel like, given this extension, they would be able to be competitive in the market and, and drive things further, um.
This sounds like another story we've heard.
All that being said, you know, just talking generally with Jim and, and Rich before the meeting, maybe a year is a little bit too long. Perhaps you all would be willing to consider, uh, an extension, but not twelve months. And, and, and maybe we get a little bit more aggressive on this infrastructure, uh, contribution piece, um, but, or you all may say that, you know, enough's enough. Cut it, cut it and run, but at the end of the day, it is absolutely y'all's decision.
I have a question about that, so I'll wait for Rich.
So.
I didn't get to it yet, um, this, this is the light dust thing, right?
Yes ma'am.
Yeah, okay. Is there anything critical we're depending on them to build in terms of the wastewater system out there? Was this some sort of key player in our plan being executed?
So our intent was to build a regional pump station on the Forest Hill Cemetery property, just downstream from where they are. That would allow us to serve them, take the Buckhorn Pump Station offline, take the Pedon Pump Station offline, and I'm blanking on the name of the other. Can't remember the name of the other, but essentially turn what is currently three pump stations into, so long-term goal is still there. Uh, we had originally flagged a portion of the fourteen million dollars of state funding that we received two years ago in the budget to offset our portion of this, uh, of that pump station. Um, they are obligated, if, if we were out of the picture and didn't have that desire, they would have to build a three million dollar pump station and a pipeline themselves. Um, so that's where the number of three million dollars, uh, came from, I think. Uh, and I may have my numbers slightly off here, a little off, but, um, but ultimately, uh, to Joe's point, they basically have come back and said, we can only afford a million dollars, our pro forma doesn't work if we have to spend any more than that. Uh, you all have become masters of water and wastewater projects at this point over the last few years. You know, a million dollars doesn't make you dead in anything that we do at this point. And so, uh, while it's a, uh, uh, tenants, I guess, uh, I don't know if I put a better word is, but, um, well, it's a portion, you know, and something better than nothing, um, we would basically have to foot the bill for that infrastructure. And, um, if I had to be, uh, if I had one four million dollar project or one place to put four million dollars or whatever to be able to make something to go, I'd be putting it over at the interchange and trying to get the other pump station by the hospital in the ground, because that's definitely a much higher value property, uh, than what this could be. So, uh, the immediacy of that pump station on the Forest Hills is not, I mean, the Buckhorn Pump Station is relatively new, less than a couple of years. Uh, the other two serve, you know, a dozen homes here, fifteen homes there kind of thing. Uh, they're more of a nuisance, frankly, that's why we'd like to take them offline, um, but we can keep, keep them running for a little while longer until something actually gets going. Uh, what Jim and I were just mentioning is, you know, one of the, um, one of their emails at one point had said, hey, you know, when Patrick left, you know, we weren't getting all the, the love or whatever that we needed, which, uh, frankly, in my opinion, it wasn't my job to run their project for him. Uh, but if you all wanted to, uh, give them a, um, whatever, I'll print, you know, you know, a last ditch effort here, opportunity. Uh, Patrick left, I believe, in August, Joe came on board, you know, based in February, August, six months. So if you wanted to give them an extension essentially to the end of the calendar year and say, you know, we got till December thirty-first, and that's it. Um, and Jim.
And to their credit, they have gotten the massive property on. I'm sorry, they have gotten the massive property, that trying to order a piece of property, uh, that they needed for their site plan under contract.
So we don't lose anything by doing six more months, and potentially we get them to fund their share of this wastewater infrastructure, which is helpful but not critical to us, is that about it?
That'd be mine, yeah, that'd be a good characterization of it.
Okay.
So six months, gives them one last ditch effort to make it go, um, if it doesn't go, no harm or foul at this point, um. I would say give them six, and Lord willing, if I'm here, six months from now, um, hopefully not, but if I am, you know, I wouldn't.
As hard as you're working, I think you're.
I don't know. I work hard about everything. See me on my day job. Um, well, I don't know, I, we're, we're kicking the can down the road, and, you know, every time we kick the can down the road, we may be missing opportunity for something else that comes along, so, um, that's just my thoughts. I mean, I guess six is okay if y'all think it's fair.
Yeah.
I don't have a problem with six months, I just don't think they've shown us anything, I think their track record sort of speaks for itself. But if we can get money to do part of that pump station, I don't have a problem with six months, I know I'm probably not gonna vote for another extension at this point, but.
Yeah, right, right now, your sunk costs that you have right now is just the preliminary design of the pump station, I don't, I don't, if I recall, I don't believe we took it past maybe thirty percent design, not even. Um, I might have been still at, uh, designed, uh, ten percent design or whatever. Um, but I will, I would suggest, if we're gonna do this, option two there, with a, with a voodoo math or whatever, I would, I would not, I, I would like cash upfront if I were you all, and a million dollars is not, not enough. I think, um, uh, we probably could come up with a better estimate, uh, proportionally of what it's gonna cost, uh, if they have a little bit better information now.
Well, I mean, I know Jim will and Joe and you will, I mean, I'd say we're giving them the six-month extension, the balls in our court. I think we make this extension as tight as we can make it and get as much out of this extension as we can for ourselves.
So the current PSA pushes all the improvements onto the developer?
Basically, the current term is just extended six months, that's what it says.
All right.
Got a direction there? Joe, was there anything else economic development wise?
Um, not if it's, I, I don't think so. I don't.
All right, so maybe that's.